It is December 21st, 2015, our last meeting of the year. We will call the meeting to order at 6:45. The first item on our agenda is the approval of a series of minutes. Let's start with December 7th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from December 7th, 2015?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any comments, edits, discussion? Nope? Nope? All in favor to approve the minutes from December 7th, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I will abstain because I wasn't here.
You'll abstain, okay. Oh, you weren't here?
No.
That was the one? Okay. Thank you for letting me know. The minutes from December 14th, 2015, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any edits or discussions? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anybody abstaining or opposing? Nope. Okay. Good. December 15th, minutes from December 15th, 2015, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any edits or comments, discussions? Okay. All in favor to approve the minutes from December 15th, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay. By the way, just for everybody's information, December 14th, 15th, and 17th, those are the minutes from our interviews. Superintendent interviews. Minutes from December 17th, 2015, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that as well.
Okay. Any edits, comments, discussions? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Done. Next, we have our visitors' comments. We do not see any visitors today, and we will move to the next section, reports and recommendations of our superintendents.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item for discussion is the financial report. Now, we'll turn that over to Mr. Doughty.
Okay. Well, I did send along earlier last week, the report, and I guess it's, we can sum it up by saying there's good news and bad news.
Okay.
And today, we're tracking pretty much all budget items are tracking in a normal fashion, except for building maintenance, which I pointed out at the last meeting. And the good news is there's some definite opportunity for savings in the heating area of the budget. As prices this year are, not only are they down, way down, about 30% down, but the weather's been pretty mild, too, so that's the good news. Conversely, we are looking at, there's a possible additional need for tuitions, which could conceivably really alter the budget. Right now, we don't know when that is, what that is, how much that is, but, you know, I would say probably another month we'll have a better handle on what's going on in that, in that regard. On the revenue side, the school choice numbers were released last week, and we were down $76,000 from what was anticipated, what we received last year. And basically, what we received last year is what we budgeted this year, anticipating to receive, and the numbers are down $76,000. The plus side there is the circuit breaker money that we're going to be getting this year is up $50,000, so there is a net difference of a minus $26,000 for more anticipating on the revenue. As I stated, I believe this is manageable at the moment, but we're going to keep our eyes on what's, what's going on within the budget, and we'll alert you immediately if anything changes.
So the first item that you mentioned, what is, what is, is there, do we know what the magnitude is on that one? I missed it. The good news part?
The heating.
Yeah, the heating.
Well, we budgeted our oil at, I think it was $90,000 a gallon, or, yeah, $265 a gallon, and we paid thus far $1.90.
Okay.
So it's down considerably.
And not having to use as much.
And not having to use as much. We're still, we filled up one so far this fiscal year.
Okay.
And that's it, so far.
All right.
So that's the good news.
Okay. Do we know, do we know how much we saved by this time, or do we not do it that way? Or just do it for the whole?
Well, yeah.
How many times do we fill normally them and put it that way, by this time of the year?
Four. Well, by this time?
Yeah.
Usually just once.
Once?
But we just filled it not that long ago. And as I said, it's been pretty mild. We haven't, I know we haven't used a lot.
Okay. And how many gallons do we do each time?
I think I have that. We did 11,000 gallons.
We filled 11,000 this last time?
Yeah, between, between all the schools, yes.
So 11,000 times 75 cents savings, right?
Yep.
Okay.
And what did we budget at, and what did we, what did we pay again? Was one $1.90, one $1.65, is that right?
$2.65.
About $1.90.
$1.90, yeah. It's about a 30% savings.
So we have $8,000 or so savings on that one?
Yes.
Yeah, presently.
Presently.
The rumor is that it's going to be a mild winter this year, but, you know.
We can track it.
We'll see, yeah.
Dave Droscher and I have decided there will be no snow.
There will, there will be?
I like that decision.
No snow.
It's on weekends.
Or just on weekends. Mood snow on the weekends, but no 4 o'clock in the morning, wake-up calls, snow.
I like their planning.
Yep.
That's an excellent decision.
Now, the school choice, was that, was that incoming school choice?
Yes.
Yeah.
So we didn't get the numbers we thought, or did we? What happened there? That's quite a bit.
It may have been that some parents chose somewhere else and chose not to come in.
We did, there was a little uptick on the, on the sending side. We saved a little money, about $8,000 or $9,000.
In other words, we sent less students out?
Yes.
So that's $75,000 or so that you're talking about, is that net?
It's a net. 76 is a net.
Okay. So how many students fewer than we expected, we anticipated or budgeted for, did we receive?
That I don't know.
I, I need to sit with Kathy, and I'm going to do it probably during the break when she and I are both in, and take a look at, the dust should have settled on district sending each other rosters of kids by now, so we'll sit and know who's, who's in and who's out, so I can get you that information.
Are these kids that we were expecting to come and decided not to come? Do we know?
Or it could very well be that they were kids who had choiced in and have chosen not to, not to stay, so.
Do we know why? I mean, has anybody reached out to those kids, parents?
I don't, because I don't know who those kids are.
Now, on the financial side, then, what, what, that money was attached to whom or to what? What was the school choice money going to be used to pay for as part of our budget?
Well, it was part of the revenue stream against our budget.
Not, not aligned to any particular?
No.
No.
So basically, and I say it's a manageable situation, is that when you look at school choice along with circuit breaker, the net difference is only $26,000, and that alone can be covered right by the heating.
Yeah. Right. But then again, for our upcoming exercise with the budget, we should, we should have a better understanding as to what are the factors that led to this. It could be that some, some students that were here last year chose not to come back. It could be that, you know, we, we thought we were going to receive so many new students because so many left at the end of last year, but we did not get the numbers that we expected. It could all be related to different things, but to the extent that we can understand, we can be, we can more successful with budget for next year.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
So just, just to follow up on the school choice kids, will we at some point know why those kids didn't come back, or why they left, why they choiced out?
I'll have to look and see what, you know, I'll have to look back a year to see if it's kids who had choiced in from somewhere else and they're now longer on our roster. And then I won't know, you know, if they choiced into us, I won't know, you know, where they've gone particularly. And I mean, I can reach out, I have tried to reach out to choice parents in the past. Especially once a decision is made, you get very little response.
Yeah, and I'm certainly not asking to try and get them back. I'm more interested in why.
Yeah, I know, but to try and get that information out of them is, is difficult at best once they've made a, a decision, but, you know, certainly we can try some way to reach out to them, you know.
I think it's worth, considering how much time we spend on this?
Yeah.
Discussing it, it seems like it's, especially, it's, it's a gap. I mean, it's a pretty significant gap right now. It seems worth it to me.
So what is the average school choice per student?
5,000.
5,000.
5,000, so 75 is 15 net student difference right there. So that's, that's a pretty considerable difference in terms of our budgeting, so we should, yeah.
And the school choicing inside, we're receiving 600 and some odd thousand, whereas we're paying out about 300,000 on the sending side, so.
We're actually on the upside, in terms of school choice as a town.
Well, yeah, we are. And, you know, the presentation, the one from the collaborative, you know, we, we were clearly one of the better off school districts, but if there is any trend that shows otherwise, we should not, you know, keep on budgeting based on some expectation. That may not be realistic anymore.
Right.
And also, if, you know, we're hearing, I'm not saying we're going to hear from 15, but if we hear any sort of theme, a similar theme, it's worth knowing.
It helps, it helps us to know what to work on.
Yeah. I'll get a better handle on that hopefully over the break, so that, you know.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Archie?
The 3,500 line, I was curious what happened in a month where over 6,200 was now spent from November, under athletics and student activities. What was that attributed to?
All right, if you ask me that again, I think.
Line 24?
Yeah.
I see that.
3,500. This month expended was 86,000, last month was 24,000. What, what happened in a month?
Probably officials' fees, coaches', stipends, all that stuff will be paid out.
Stipends for the coaches at the end of the fall season.
But doesn't some of that come out of athletic revolving?
Yeah, but a lot of towns make the move at the end of the year, they will just move the athletic revolving into that line item. So in order to pay them, they're paying them out of this line item, this line item.
Yeah.
But we will use the athletic revolving to.
To offset, yeah.
Right. To offset some of that cost.
So I think this goes, go ahead.
I was just going to say that, you know, a lot of this, how I'm looking at it, Archie, and even though I have a pretty good handle on, on school budgets, I think part of the problem, though, is, you know, we're seeing these, these numbers, and we have no way of understand, you, you know what's happening, all the moving parts, and we don't. You know, like, I got to tell you, the, the school committee line just drives me crazy every time I look at it.
Yeah. I brought that with me tonight.
Thank you.
I did.
Because, because the thing is, you know, we have to answer the community.
Yep.
And they ask us questions, and all I can say is, I really don't know what they're doing. I don't know. So it kind of hurts the transparency that we're trying to build with the town. And I don't know if there's a way to help us as a school committee kind of understand the moving parts a little bit better, without being overwhelming for us, but I mean.
Yeah.
Or to them. I don't want to overwhelm them either.
No, exactly. I, you know, I, I don't know if there's a way to possibly do that, but I know that it would help me, rather than the questions, you know, like Jim just asked about the athletic line, if we had some kind of way to understand what's happening.
Yeah. I know that's primarily all the stipends for the coaches and the officials in the year end.
Thank you.
At the end of the fall season.
I'm not trying to get paid.
No, no, I know that, no. Legitimate questions, and the school committee is, is Niask, I mean, that was $10,000 or close to it.
Yeah.
Of that, $18,000.
Okay.
And there was dues in there, you know, there was $4,000 in dues.
For the collaborative?
Yeah, I believe it was for the collaborative.
Yeah.
So that's, that was the bulk of the spending in that line.
We're in, okay.
Just a question, because it may come up. We never see anything, at least that I can remember, anything related to school lunch, yet I hear things amongst the town that it's in arrears again, and they get upset they have to cover this, so what's going on with lunch, school lunch? We never, we never get a report. I've never had a report since I've been here.
Well, if you want Chartwell's to do it, well, ask them to do it.
Whoever does that, who, somehow the money's coming through, is it the school lunch revolving?
School lunch revolving account, yeah. That's where the money comes through.
Are there any issues in the school lunch? Is it a deficit again?
I, I, sometimes it does dip into deficit, yes.
Well, I think, I think it would, just because of.
Well, it's just, again, you do a big bulk order, and you may be in deficit for a little bit until you get the revenues into offset.
But, but just, just the fact that we have less kids eating, because we don't have as many kids in the cafeteria each and every day.
I'll look at the revenue, so I'll, I'll take a look at that with Chartwell's. I can get back to you.
Well, I don't know what anybody else feels, but I think that, I hear that sometimes, and then I, like Murray said, I have no idea about that, so.
Yeah, we can.
And the most recent contract we just signed with them was revenue neutral.
Right, right. They're guaranteeing.
They're guaranteeing we're going to be revenue neutral, so.
Right.
But I'll definitely look into it.
Well, I just wonder how they're doing that, because.
Yeah.
And if, as before, if there were any increases to the lunch costs, we would, we would know about that, right? That's, that's something that we'll, that will go through.
Yeah, you, you'd have to vote that.
Okay. I mean, since we mentioned that it's revenue neutral, I mean, I, like Jim said, then, then, you know, with everything changing and the numbers fluctuating, students and the lunches provided, it would be, it would be nice to know how they are getting there. It might be an opportunity for us to better understand, one, number two, if there is any need to help or support in any other way, we should find out before it gets too far into the year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, just to tell you, there, there is a line item in our budget, $10,000, under the business operations, under the 1,400 category.
Yeah.
And you can see that there's $10,000 unexpended. That's school lunch.
Yeah. Yeah.
So that goes directly to Chartwell's?
If, if needed.
Right.
It hasn't been needed.
Which line is that?
That's your support system for them.
1,400, function code 1,400.
Line nine.
You'll see that between expended and encumbered, we still have available $10,000. That is the line item for school lunch.
All right.
The line 30, or whatever, the tuition has passed, that's also jumped way up to?
Yep.
100, over $150,000? Not good now?
Yeah, well.
How do we get, how do we do so bad there?
The tuition's, I think, again, it's, it's where.
That was done last time.
Yeah, look, look, you got to have to look at line 28, where you have the total for tuitions of $1,086,000, and what's been expended, and what we're anticipating encumbered. It's actually even a little bit better than that right now. We have a little cushion in there based on the actual bills that we receive for all the tuitions. But again, with what we're looking at potentially, that'll be wiped out plus, plus more.
Looking at some out of district.
Police, you know.
So a couple of things, again, just to be able to, for us to be able to explain to folks when they ask us what's going on with the budget. Jim asked about the athletics revolving?
No.
Fund? I'm still not sure that I understand why we don't just take the money and put it in there, and we have to show a deficit for a while, then we do it. I don't know whether there is any accounting reasoning, reason, or it's invested somewhere else, I don't know.
The athletic revolving fund, again, is also subject to bringing in user fees and gate receipts. So when we're trying to pay coaches, we may not have deposits to offset an athletic revolving at that moment in time. So put it into the regular budget, and then do the journal entry once we have a better handle on the receipts. It's just a sort of a timing thing as to when receipts come in and when payments have to go out. And when there's a huge chunk of payments that have to go out, sometimes that can put that revolving account under until the next season gears up, and we start getting user fees and whatever to re, rebackfill.
Did the increase in the user fees help? I know we talked about that in late August there. Did that help to not that?
It has helped.
Even though there were, there wasn't a, there was one last teen this fall, there wasn't a middle school or something?
That goes back to numbers, students.
Numbers, yeah.
But most of those kids were picked up in JV, so it wasn't like they didn't have someplace to play.
Right.
Right.
But I mean, didn't you save some money, because you don't have to pay a coach, you know, there's, there's savings incurred along with it, so.
Right, right.
Not that they're paying them off a lot, but.
Right. But this is, again, something that's going to allow us to plan better for the next budget. And in fact, you know, hopefully soon enough, we're going to start talking about that budget, and we're going to start doing the workshops to better understand where we're going with this. So going back to the revolving, athletics revolving, you're right, I mean, sometimes we don't know when the money is going to come in. But a good chunk of the money comes from user fees.
Right.
And we collect those before students start playing. So the gap, I guess, in my mind at least, would be related to other collections that we have, whether it's, you know, people watching the games and all that. But it would be good to understand what that gap is, and how much of it is, is made up for through user fees, because as Jim said, we already increased those fees, hoping that it wasn't going to put us in a situation when we have major deficits, so we can better plan. Anything that we can mitigate now, let's just mitigate it now, because if it's not working, it's not working, and we can only do two things. One is just propose a different fee structure, or number two, not include the cost at all. I mean, we can't be in deficit and run programs. We don't want to eliminate any programs, so the third option then would be, how do we make up for that difference? And unless we understand what the difference is, we cannot make up for it. And the other, the last note, and we, you know that we ask, I actually asked, and, you know, Murray nicely did this time, we asked about that school committee line. Not only the explanation part, but this year, remember, we did not go to the, again, we did not go to any training, we did not go to the annual meeting of the MASC. I really think that we should. Not all of us, but at least somebody should go and represent us. It's about networking and finding out. And we have nothing, in fact, we're $5,000 in deficit on that line, 6,000 almost, so we have nothing left for any other opportunities. It would be good to know whether or not we should put more money in there. I mean, Niask was known to us before, and our collaboration dues, collaborative dues are same thing every year, so that means 14,000 at least should have been there, and that's our budget for this year. That means we left nothing else for it. So, I mean, this is our, just for conversation, not, you know, it's not that this is right, this is wrong, but one part is education, one part is accountability, so that we can explain. The third part is our planning part, which we are hopefully getting into in January sometime soon.
Yes. I think, too, part of the, the issues with the budget is this constant having to back into a number that we've been given. And I think that's happened for so many years that people have sort of lost sight of what, because when I talk to the senior leadership team about, you know, what are certain line items for and about, and, you know, or I get questions about where do I take this from, it tells me that people have lost the path of what needs to be budgeted for, where it needs to be budgeted from, et cetera, because so much of the thinking has been, we have to eliminate a discrepancy by removing funds, and it's not been done in a methodical manner so that everybody's clear as to where everything flows. So that's why we're going to zero-based budgeting, because we're going to develop first a needs-based budget, so that you can at least see what the needs are, knowing that we're probably going to have to prioritize that list, but at least it gives a, a chance to reset. So I'm asking, you know, people to look at their supply lines, I'm asking people to look at staffing and, and all of those kinds of things, so that we can get a better handle on where things are, because I, I just think there's been this lengthy history of backing into a number, that people have lost total sight of where things are. Because I have people asking me, and I'll say, well, where did you take this from in the past? Well, and I don't get good answers to those questions. So I think it's just, this is an exercise they'll hate me for, but hopefully they'll thank me later, because nobody likes zero-based budgeting.
No, but it, but it makes a, a big difference. I know that, you know, in my job, when we have to do budgeting with our, with our staff, they understand every line, what it's for, what, what it can be used for and cannot be used for.
Right.
So they have total control of their budgets, because they get it, and they, I mean, that makes such a big difference, when you actually know what you're allowed to do with any given line for a school budget. So I, I think that's important.
And then just, just, back to athletic revolving, so when, when we tell someone to pay a fee to pay a sport, is that, is that money that I write a check for, you know, somebody does, does that go into athletic revolving?
Yes.
And then what is it used for? Why am I paying, you asked the parent, said, why, why am I paying $150? What's that used for?
It's helping to offset coaches', officials', transportation.
Athletic transportation. So how do we know how much is enough there, and how much to put in, back to Emery's question, into line 3,500 athletics? How do we know? How do we come up with that?
That's why, that's why we're going to zero-based, so that we can, we can be more specific about what is going to be charged to our revolving account versus whatever. My observation of the budget in process and implementation is that it's kind of pretty loose. So again, our current athletic director has not had a whole lot of training in budget stuff, so Archie and I need to sit with him and talk to him about how to build a line item budget, and what he's looking at coming from where, because I think it's kind of like, well, I see we have a pocket of money here, or I'd like to do this, but there's not, and I oftentimes have to say, you needed to make these decisions prior to the implementation of the budget. You need to plan, not that.
So they're more invested in the line item.
Right. Right. Because I think, again, it's a case of trying to make things work based on a number that you're backing into versus high. Here's what the plan is, and yes, these things will absolutely come out of the local, and these things will absolutely come out of revolving, you know, and having that budget planned. Now, does, do budget plans change?
Yeah.
Absolutely, because a budget is a snapshot in time, and it's a moving target. But at least to start with some sort of headset around this, and that's what I'm finding as I'm working with people in the implementation phase of the budget, there's not a real strong headset about, I've made a plan, and I'm executing the plan. A plan that is now driven by a strategic plan, you know. I've said that to teachers as we're looking at curriculum stuff. You need to start thinking about, what do I need if we're going to redo the science curriculum, you know?[1706.75] Do we need hands-on kits versus textbooks that could get old pretty quickly? You know? So, what are we looking at? You know, how do we make decisions around textbooks? Are we asking people to look at two or three different things that they know are out there? Are we asking people to pilot them before we ask you to make a commitment financially? Those things have not been done in the past. So, I hear rumblings about, you know, some textbooks we like, some textbooks we don't like, but it was done based on, you know, a sales pitch versus, uh, I'm going to play with this for a while in my classroom. You know? And again, it's hard to make an informed decision about what set of resources are best for kids if you haven't piloted stuff first. And just some of that kind of methodical thinking that I don't see a whole lot of.
And that's why your comment of, I think the staff's going to hate me for it in the short term is because of this, in the beginning, it is going to require a lot of methodical.
Right. I told them, I want you to account for every pencil you are going to buy. That's how, back to zero, we're going. Which, when I first met up with TMS, they approved me on that. Now, they're liking zero-based.
Well, it makes sense.
Yeah.
Well, the principals, the principals manage their own books and supply count in their own building. So, they know what they have, they put the pervert against it. And if they have spent it all, then they have to complete to you for additional money.
Right.
So, that, so that must be under control.
It is, for the most part, for them. But then, once in a while, I'll get this off the wall, like there's, it's, people are thinking there's a magic money tree somewhere and there is not, you know? I'll get, I'll get, I'll get somebody who will say, you know, "Well, could, could I, you know, I need some money to do thus and so." And I'll say, "Well, where are you going to take it from in your budget?" "Oh." Yeah, you can't, you can't say, "I need 5,000 or 2,000 for something," without saying it's going to come from where? Um, so there's, there's sort of this magic money mentality that I bump up against.
But really, even though it's going to be hard work, you're trying to empower them. Yes, I agree.
Right.
They're, they're going to be more invested in the budget side of the budget.
And I don't care what district you're in, once in a while, you just need to do this to reset. You really do. Because again, I think it's, you know, of your, there's been so much operation in the deficit mode of mind. We have to cut, we have to cut, we have to cut, that people aren't thinking about, well, I can cut 3,000 from here. Well, what does that mean you're not going to buy? And they haven't thought that far down the road. Or, gee, you know, it's like, um, that Acuity, you know, assessment program they looked at last year, which was to the tune of eight grand, that gave us zip for data. So, that, you know, people are like, "Well, you know, are we going to buy Acuity?" No. I'm not going to pay $8,000 for something that doesn't yield us anything. We're going to figure something else out, so.
So, in the bigger picture, it's more of a collaborative process, which is what we're trying to instill. And it's not, it's, it's not a top-down process. It's, we're all, we're all in this and we all have to figure it out.
So, when that point comes of, hi, you've built a needs-based budget and it looks beautiful, but there's no way we can afford that, which will probably be most likely, then we need to go back to the table as a group and prioritize as a group. Which means, one cost center may have to give, so another cost center can get. It's just how this stuff works. Um, you know, it may not be within my own budget. I may have to give on something because somebody else needs something that's a higher priority than I need right now. And so, how do we, how do we do that, that whole process? But I think having to reset the budget and re-understand what it is that we need in our lines. And, you know, come January, you know, Archie and I will be meeting with them one by one to help them walk through this, how you're going to put this together with a template, et cetera, so that they can come up with some numbers for us.
Also, the idea is not necessarily, let's cut everything and then not do anything with that. Many times, it may allow us to find the funds to use for things that we could not do the last so many years, because we didn't have money to spend for those things. I mean, it could be pure savings, but it could be also reallocating somewhere elsewhere we have some need for it.
You know, three years down the road, you know, after a lighting project is done here, you're going to look at about $30,000 worth of savings that you can redirect, because you will have paid off the lighting program.
Right.
And you can redirect those funds into the classroom. Uh, I had a meeting on Friday with a couple of people from Kirsage Energy, which is a solar provider. They're building a couple of solar farms up on the Greenfield line on leased property from Westover.
Yeah.
And they want to, they want to first sell to municipalities. So, they've met with Mr. Martin and then they came and met with me on Friday. Um, so, they would like to come to the next school committee meeting to give you a proposal that could, again, save tens of thousands of dollars by going solar instead of going off the grid, you know? So, that, um, you know, I wouldn't put all of your energy stuff, because it has to be a long-term 20-year contract. But you might want to think about 80%, you know, or some number like that. So, that if you begin to amass some energy savings, um, you know, down the line, that you're not then on the hook for something that you're not using. Um, so, you know, to be a little bit conservative, I know Chris said something about town lines probably doing something in the 90% range. I don't know that 90 is necessarily a place I would feel comfortable, because with the new building coming online and more energy-efficient systems, you know, and if some capital things happen here in terms of replacing boilers and having more energy-efficient boilers here, changing out the lighting, those kinds of things, you want to be a little bit careful in terms of your consumption. You may not want to put your whole bill into solar, but you could probably put a sizable chunk. And again, you know, some of the numbers I looked at were in the $20,000 range. So, again, that's money you can redirect into the classroom, rather than spending it on utilities. Um, and, uh, you know, whether or not we look at a new vendor for electricity, uh, because the rates we're paying right now are kind of high, you know? So, there are other people out there that do, you know, electricity vendor stuff that, you know, we might find somebody who, again, would be more reasonable as well. All those things coalesce, suddenly you have a teacher's salary that you've saved. You know, so you're not looking at reducing staff or whatever, or making some of the really hard decisions you had to make last spring.
Any other questions? Thank you, Judy. Any other questions for Archie?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Archie.
Thank you.
So, we're going to have those folks next meeting? Judy?
Yeah, that's, that's the hope. Um, the next item is that community compact meeting that I went to with the Department of Revenue at the town hall. And basically, where they're looking for, the school department, obviously, they have a fairly significant voice at the table, is around long-range financial planning. I got a better handle from the DOR person about what they're looking for. Um, you know, I have to feed her some other data, but they're looking at doing some long-range financial forecasting. So, they need to know, like, who from our staff is paid from grants, um, you know? And trying to look at, should we have less people paid from grants? Because if you pay a salary from a grant for a teacher, you're on the hook for a 9% surcharge fee from mass teachers' retirement. So, title one, you have to. But are there other grants where, you know, we did that with the kindergarten grant, I think it was, where we said, "Let's take the teachers out of the grant and let's put paras in, because you're not on the hook for Hampshire County Retirement." You save 9,000, you save 9% in the grant that you can then buy supplies with, you're not buying out of your local budget. So, making some of those kinds of decisions and whatever. So, what they're going to try and do is do some long-range forecasting. So, um, that's what the, that whole meeting was about. And obviously, you know, school departments categorically are usually about 2/3 of the town's total budget. So, it makes absolute sense up at the table. So, um, get a better handle on where they're going. So, she's going to take a whole bunch of numbers and they're going to, they have forecasting models. Um, basically, what they're looking for is a model that would say, when would there be a gap between revenues and expenses?
Maybe five years ago.
Yeah. Wanted to say, you know, was tempted to say, "Were there already? We don't need a forecast to tell us that." But, you know, whatever. So, um, you know? So, we'll see what, what comes of all of it. But at least I got a better sense of what the context of all of that was.
And that's the only component where we are.
Right at the moment, yes.
Participating, okay. Okay. And the, the, that being the educational part, understanding when the gap's going to occur, what's the, what's the final outcome? Are they going to do something to make up for it? Or are they, what are they looking for?
Well, that's, that's when the town has to say, okay, if we're looking at a gap, how are we going to solve this problem? You know? You've cut expenses pretty much to the bone, you know? Where are you going to look at generating new revenue?
So, it's, it's kind of funny, in fact ironic, that the state keeps on cutting. I mean, we're dependent on the state for the most part. They keep on cutting our funds and then they come to do a study to see when we're going to hit that point. And from that perspective, wherever it did, that's the reason we keep on cutting our budgets. That's the reason why we don't have some things that we had before.
Yeah, I'm still trying to understand the purpose of all of this, from their perspective.
Well, this was an initiative that came out of the governor's office. And so, you know, the governor offered that, and actually through the lieutenant governor, offered that towns could sign on to this community compact. And they were best practices within municipal governments, um, that towns could sign up for. And so, um, and then get a helping hand from state agencies, um, to take a look at something. So, this was one of the things that the swap board signed up for, was to do this long-range forecasting. So, again, she's going to take some budget numbers. I've got to give her some more information. And they're going to throw it into a forecasting, you know, model that they have and see where it all shakes out, so that then they can make, they can say to the town, "Well, you know, you're either at that gap or the gap is looming." And hopefully provide some assistance to say, "What are you going to do to plan for closing that gap?"
But they're not providing any assistance.
Monoterrably speaking?
Yeah.
No.
So, they're basically providing recommendations.
Yeah. I did mention the fact that the Chapter 70 formula goes back to 19.
A good recommendation goes a long way.
Goes back to 1993 and that, you know, certainly that has been talked about at legislative level. And, you know, it would be high time that the Chapter 70 formula.
But it sounds like what they're working on is actually not, it would actually be hurtful to us.
It's, it's almost insulting, from what I've seen. Look, we've already, we already know we're at a gap. You know, we've been there. So, I'm, I'm trying to understand what we're going to offer up that we haven't already figured out for ourselves.
I think they're part of the bargain included something like, we're not going to have any more unfunded mandates if you promise to work together, so that in the long run, we've figured out together what our gaps are.
Of course, every time a new program comes out of the legislature, whoever sponsors the bill says, "Well, this isn't another unfunded mandate." And I want to say, "Excuse me, yes, it is." But, you know?
Yeah. Okay.
So.
That, that's, that's it for that one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
You had asked for an update on substitutes. So, I did ask Mary Poole to do some, and Nancy to do some numbers for you. So, you have three years' worth of sub, how much was budgeted? And as you can see, every year, it's gone into deficit. And then Mary did provide you with last year, as well as where we are right now in terms of in-house teacher coverage and some of those numbers. So, you know, I took a look at some of this, you know, short meetings, like, you know, meetings with parents or, um, you know, IEP meetings or things like that. To me, I see some inefficiencies in scheduling in terms of, you know, could team meetings be scheduled on a day when it would behoove us to hire a sub for the day and cover people on a rotating basis? That you might be able to gain some efficiencies in terms of all of that. Um, in terms of substitutes, we have had an over, over 100% increase in the number of substitutes in our district, which the bar was set pretty low, so we didn't have to go very far. But we've had like 5 new substitutes since we upped the rates. We've had two, John's going to interview one of them, I think, tomorrow or the next day. Um, but two custodial substitutes, we had none. So, two, two custodial substitutes that have come in the door. So, we are seeing an uptick in teacher subs as well as custodial subs. And I think we'll try and make another push after the first of the year to see if we can get some more in. So, we are seeing more subs come in. Principals have been, you know, interviewing and getting teachers in, so that we can get things taken care of, so.
Is there, is there any inkling as to whether the gaps that we're seeing here are due to the practice of using teachers as opposed to substitutes?
I would say it's probably a combination of both. Um, you know, Mary said it would take her quite a bit of time and energy to go back beyond FY15 to look at the in-house subs versus the day subs. So, I just said, "Well, give me what you can out of the gate." But I would say that it's probably not been proper money budgeted. Um, I think we could probably take a little closer look at staff attendance and see if we see any patterns and things that we might want to talk to staff about, like, you know, are you habitually out on Mondays or Fridays? And, you know, what's up with that, you know, kind of thing.
A few years ago, they, they were doing a lot of curriculum work. In other words, teacher would be out and the sub would come in while they're doing curriculum work. So, that could be a reason to have increases in that line. But that isn't happening this year, right?
No.
You're not freeing people up and getting subs for them to... Why did, I was surprised to me, I know, I looked at the amount budgeted for. I know you do it by school.
Mm-hmm.
Regular staff and high school should be more, because there's obviously a few more teachers. How come the, what's the amount put for sped teachers? They have a sped line and it's the same as the, the regular staff?
Were you looking at?
Just look at, look at, look at the most recent one. I guess it's, must be this year's, right? East Meadow Elementary teacher subs, $8,000 something. West Street teachers, $8,000. I think it's eight. Secondary, $16,000 something. Then there's an East Meadows sped teacher, $8,000. West Street sped teachers, $8,000. High School sped teachers, $16,000. Why? When there's nowhere near the, on the teacher's teacher special ed is regular ed. I've seen that all three years, I think. So, what is, is that money that they're putting through the sped department? I mean, I, I, it didn't make any sense to me.
I'm not sure why it's broken out that way, to be blunt honest with you.
Now, what's, what's the thinking? Because we, I've never got involved. What's the thinking in terms of how you do that? X amount of teachers who might be out X amount of days, do a math thing? Is that how we come up with that? Is it a guess? Because you never know. I mean, teachers have the days or they get sick and personal days are going to add up, but.
It looks like we did the same thing for regular and sped all three years that we have here.
But I just don't know why it's lined that way. Did you, is that the way it reads? Do you have a different chart of accounts now that you're working with? Is that still the same thing?
Again, I think this is some old history. Um, I think once we, and I thought the town was already on Softwrite. I have found out that they're not.
Surprised.
Yet.
That's only been two years ago.
Um, and then I got another email from Mr. Martin with a numbering convention for chart of accounts that's not going to work for us. So, um, I have actually reached out to Softwrite directly to see if I can get them to help me understand this a little better. I've not heard back from them, so I'm going to try again.
Okay.
And see what, what the deal is. Because when I talked to Chris about this and I said, "Is there like a demo thing that I can look at?" And he said, "No, they don't have a demo account," which makes, which is kind of bizarre.
Why would any software?
They must have a sandbox somewhere that you can play.
So, but he told me that, you know, there was not anything I could take a look at. So, again, I will try, I tried to reach out to them once, I have not heard back. I'll try to reach out to them again, because again, um, this is now a second email and I've gotten around a numbering convention for chart of accounts that's not going to work in terms of the codes that we need for the department.
Is this software that is widely used or popular or well-known?
It is a company out of Westboro, Mass, that I have never heard of before.
Okay. Actually, that basically invalidates a question that I was going to have around all these questions that we have. And normally, when I ask, I don't really mean to create more work. But ideally, I'm expecting that, right? I'm expecting that.
No, maybe you're about to, I feel it coming, let me grab it.
No, no, actually, there's, there's nothing else coming. Because even with this one, I thought that it was as simple as saying, "Show me all subs. Show me all subs that were internal teachers. Show me all subs." And so, our current system apparently doesn't do that.
Not well, no.
But Softwrite, we don't, we can't even get to it anytime soon at this rate.
The current software, just so you know, is built on an access database.
Good.
Sounds old.
Yeah, it is. And I got to tell you, your account numbers are numbers I have never seen. And I got to tell you, your account numbers are numbers I have never seen in thirty-some-odd years in this business.
Are you serious?
I have not ever seen it. I still keep wrapping my head around the numbering system. I've been trying since March. I have not gotten there yet. So, you know, if we could get a chart of accounts and get something up and running that would fit function and object codes as I know and love, I'd be thrilled. But it's been a struggle to try and get that accomplished. Not for the lack of trying, but, you know, I got one email that was given to us by Accounts Payable. That was an email exchange between her and the town administrator. And I told him that the numbering convention and that was not going to work for us. So then he gave me another numbering convention last week and Archie and I looked at it and it's not going to work for us either.
So Softwrite, which is the one that's been talked about, so don't they work with towns and schools somewhere in this state? It's obviously working somewhere, otherwise if it's not working somewhere, then this is an impossibility.
That's what we have to find out.
Yes, is where are they and who can we talk to? Because, you know, again, when I asked first if there was a demo account that I could get into, so I said, if I could just look at it so I could figure out how this thing, so Archie and I could sit down and figure out how this thing works and then maybe figure out a way in which we can get a chart of accounts that would help us do what we need to do. He told me that they don't have demo accounts and I was like, what?
Is Softwrite on the town side? Is that up in town hall?
It's not up, yeah.
That's not, I understand it's not up.
But the same way, like someone comes to sell you a new copier and then show you how to use it, it's got to be something, Softwrite, who comes in and shows payroll and everybody how this works, so...
Well, and I guess...
I don't know.
Talking to payroll last week, she said that they did take a peek at something.
Yeah, there was a demonstration.
Done, but it was, that was pretty much the end of it, so... Because I said, because I asked Chris, I said, are you running Softwrite and can you show it to me? Well, we're not running it yet.
It doesn't make sense to me why we would go with something that like nobody even has heard of.
Well, Hayverville, Walton and Malden are running their stuff.
For town and schools?
For town and schools.
Or you can't...
I don't know. Rockport, West Boylston, Littleton. So they're, at least, you know, Maynard, all these towns, so we can...
They're all within that radius.
Which are all out east, so...
Yeah, and we're all within that radius.
All right.
Well, it seems to me...
What's the title that owns behind besides Munis, Archie?
BudgetSense.
Yeah, BudgetSense. I mean, there's, there's Munis, which is kind of a...
That makes more sense.
Whatever. And then there's another one called BudgetSense, which actually is a fairly intuitive...
Pilot technologies emerged, the both of the Munis and BudgetSense.
But I mean, there are some pretty big guns out there. I don't know if this was a, you know, a financial decision because this is cheaper than Tyler Technologies' product or what the deal is, but...
Is the town using this software? So nobody's using it?
I found that out last week, that they are not using it yet.
But they talked about it two years ago when I was involved in the county through the Hampshire Council of Government.
It's probably updated now. It was two years ago.
No, the council of governments was getting the discount on it, buy it at a discount and supposed to, you know, put it in place. But then it was just one thing after another where it didn't happen. Training didn't get done, missed training opportunities, at least what I was told. So we're, they're still struggling with that, I guess.
But if we purchased something, a software program two years ago, two years later, it has to be updated or there must be updated versions of it already.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure. They would push out, they would push out updates.
Yeah, they'll push out updates today, yeah.
Yeah.
So in terms of, going back to the substitutes, last time we discussed this, we have an average ten thousand dollar or so deficits in our budgets, it seems, the last several years. So for us to be able to better plan, is it possible to find out by the time we get into that planning phase whether or not we are under budgeting because there is increase in the number of substitutes we use during the year?
Well, that's, that's clear in the three-year trend.
Oh, that's clear, okay.
If you haven't budgeted enough because you're running into a five-figure deficit every year.
And the, the other question was whether or not we are, we are primarily using internal teachers, which is costing more in terms of substituting. Is that something...
I would say that that has been a problem in the past. I think that there are days when it still is a problem, but we, again, have picked up five new subs since you upped the rates.
Yeah.
And we're going to put out another push in January to see if we can get some more.
Well, is five, I mean, we're heading in the right direction, so how many, how many do you think we realistically need to be in a comfortable situation?
Well, if you had five, you've got like eight, you know, because there were three kind of out there. You know, I would say that if you had like twelve to fifteen, you'd probably be pretty comfortable. Another way to look at doing this would be to think about potentially a secondary and an elementary sort of guaranteed sub where you would guarantee them X number of days out of a week or ten days employment, you know, six out of ten days or something like that. So that they come here first and, you know, potentially if there's nobody to sub for, they could be put to work certainly in a whole host of other ways, working with kids or whatever. So that may be another way that if you're actually hiring somebody that you're, you know, making a commitment to and they're making a commitment to you, you know, because obviously with the sub, a generic sub pool, it's whoever calls me first and in some cases, who's ever offering me the most money. You know, I mean, I've seen subs who are currently on staff come in with copies of their licenses because all of a sudden they found out there's a five-dollar differential if they are licensed. So we've had people do that.
Is that a common practice to do what you're saying, guarantee?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You used to do that in Delta Town, didn't you?
Yep, still do, one in every building.
We've never done it here, you know, never been done here. Doesn't say it can't be done.
Is there any way to gauge that? Can we have some feedback then we can maybe move in that direction too?
Well, it's, it's something that I've thought about in terms of budget planning. Would it make sense to maybe not have one in every building, but one elementary and one secondary guaranteed sub that you guarantee X number of days? Then you've got somebody you really know who knows the kids, who knows the staff.
And you get to choose that person.
And so like, they're the first, they're the first one who's hired and then after that, you're hiring other people. But if you're guaranteeing them, say, six out of ten days worth of work and you're getting down to the end of the ten-day period and you realize, you know, you need to bring them in, there's, there's not lacking of work to do. Kids in small groups, whatever else, you know, they certainly could be assigned by a principal to provide extra support to kids, you know, who need it.
Catch kids up who've been absent or behind on their work.
Right.
Many number of things, yeah.
Yep. So that's another way to do it because then that's the first person who gets assigned is the guaranteed sub. And the beauty of it is because they do get to know the kids and the teachers really well.
What's the, what's the basic proxy that we use for our calculations? Something like, we have so many teachers, they have so many vacation days, so many potential sick days and then we're going to need...
They don't have vacation days.
Say again?
No, they don't have vacation.
They don't have vacation days?
Teachers don't, no.
Because they're school employees.
Oh, they can't, they can't be out for any duration during the year for vacation purposes or personal purposes?
Oh, yeah, there's personal reasons.
I just, I just speak some more personal vacation. So do we, do we use those as proxies as we are budgeting for it?
I can't speak to your history, so I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I mean, but obviously this spending trend is like, you know...
I'm only concerned that, you know, there is a continuous deficit.
Yep.
Is that, is that number in the twenty-three-hundred line? Is that teaching tariffs? Is that where the substitute money is budgeted? There just, there's got to be, right? Where else is it? Without seeing the fine print.
That would be in the, yeah, twenty-three-hundred line, yes.
Yep.
That's part of the five, six, forty-five, one, six, two, three...
Yeah, there's seventy-five thousand dollars budgeted for all three schools, whole.
For this year.
For this year. And that's up five thousand fifty dollars from last year. And the reason that we went up is because that was an issue last year.
Right.
Midway through the year, we knew that we were going to...
We have less teachers and it still is an issue.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you for that.
Before we segue from the software, should we be making that more of a priority?
Software?
Well, you know, getting it, getting it usable.
Can we?
I, I mean, I...
Can we actually put it before the town gets on it?
My understanding was that the town was on it. And then I found out last week that the town is not on it.
We have questioned this a few times, just in the time that I've been on the, on the school committee.
Good thing we made a question for our interviews too. You know, the software is coming.
Yeah, yeah. You know, and I found that out, you know, like I say, last week while you were in mid-interview and I thought, ooh, gee. Because I just assumed the town was using it based on what I had been told. And then I found out last week that that was a wrong assumption, which will...
And when you said that, I assumed that between the last time we asked about it and now, that they, they brought it on board. So it's going to happen when you assume?
Yeah, well, and, yeah, well, in the way it's been talked about with me, I just made that leap and I guess I shouldn't have.
So getting back to the question, should we be making it a priority considering, you know, in the beginning, it was a priority for a while. We continually asked about it. Now we have an opportunity to really push for it.
Right, and maybe we could tie in with...
Formalize it and, and we have a new superintendent coming in and if we're going to do it, we can't, we can't bring him in and not have this thing on board.
Wasn't it tied in with the, did a letter get to us from the select board's office about this, the shared business service? So maybe when that letter arrives, that would be the impetus because that's what it's related to, it's related to the business side, so now we're saying, no, I need...
Well, and again, I will, I will advise you vehemently, don't do it.
I agree, but here's the question just to vote, now it's to say, okay, where are we with this Softwrite issue between the towns and schools? You know, that kind of thing of the entire town.
I think that's the first step before you look at merging personnel.
The reason I'm asking is by us driving it, we can create the way we need to create it. And we can, if we bring these people in, you know, let's say we could get somebody from Softwrite, is that Softwrite, right?
Yep.
Softwrite.
To...
Yeah, yeah.
To run this and maybe get some, a representative. I'm sure that they have people available.
Well, they, like I say, they were out, so that, the question is, you know, and then what I understand from talking with, again, with payroll was that they had access to it for a while and now they don't have access to what they had. And I don't know whether that was a demo account or what, or why, why that's happened or any of that kind of stuff, so...
And if we drive it...
I'll pursue, I'll pursue more with Softwrite.
If we drive it, we can start formalizing it and, you know, setting meetings with the players involved and, you know, we don't need the town to do it.
Or you can pick a financial software package that would better, that would allow us to do the proper accounting.
But then we already pay for this. Who paid for this?
We probably did, yeah, I think we did.
I, I see a lot of pushback.
I just don't know who's paying for what right now. I don't know any of that.
Okay.
That stuff is...
So if we never, actually, if we only mentioned the software, we never made a commitment and the only reason why we're waiting for this because of the intention of using one accounting system for the entire town, but the town is not really in a position to use it, then we may need to go forward and do something. Again, we have the, we have the larger budget. Some of these things that we need for our planning purposes, we can't get because our current system cannot give those to us. I mean, there's really no, no reason why we cannot just go ahead and at least start some investigation of what's good for, or what's, what's used by other school systems and make a decision based on that.
A lot of, a lot of districts and towns use Munis, which was really designed for municipalities. It's a little clunky, I guess it would be the best way to talk about it in terms of schools. The same company that now owns Munis owns a product called BudgetSense, which I have seen a little bit of and I think it's a little more school-friendly.
Yes.
And if the town invested already in this software and there's a way for us to go ahead and start using it before the town, even that would be an option. At least it would mean that, you know, we invested in it, somebody's using it, so we can start doing that too. But, you know, we can call some of those towns and see if their schools are using it and how they're using it. And, I mean, there are multiple approaches to it.
But I'll reach out to the company again directly and just see if I can get them to, you know, I sent a, an email thing to them.
It's cloud-based, there has to be a...
There'd be a sandbox to play in, there must be. I mean, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I mean, not that...
And if it doesn't make sense, then... If it doesn't make sense, then TMS needs to just have a software developer for schools to add into the business.
There you go.
Well, there, that makes sense.
Capital Plan?
Capital Plan.
All right.
Capital Plan.
So I came straight from work, I don't have my book list.
Sheer dot ten point nine.
Wow, publicly, publicly shamed.
I'm pretty, pretty proud of myself that I actually remembered exactly.
Judy, I was told that this is all on hold.
Well...
Is that what you've heard also?
Yes, evidently, Mr. Martin had a meeting with the capital planning committee without any of us at the table.
I asked about that, I was, I followed up on a member of the committee, said, no, the whole capital plan is on hold until after this new school vote.
Until after the vote, right.
So, end of discussion on that. They'll talk about it until after March first or February eighth, whatever.
I know, but I did promise you a conversation about this thing, so...
Wait a minute, I'm confused. Why, why postpone a meeting because of the school? Connect the dots for me.
I don't know, he didn't agree. It's on hold, they want to contribute, try to spend any of the money until after the vote.
This, this assumes a building project. What I put together assumes a building project.
Okay, so there are...
So obviously, if, God forbid, the building project doesn't go through, all bets are off and we are in a different place.
So we need the money to maintain and all that.
Yeah.
Right, so...
We might have some priorities.
But, I mean, this, yeah, it would certainly cause us to take a look at priorities. But, you know, what I tried to do was say, okay, let's make an assumption that the building goes through, in which case we would not put money out there for, you know, much of anything to East Meadow. But looking really primarily at this building and its long neglected past and seeing what we need to do. And the number one priority, I would say, and I would almost say the same regardless of what happens with the West Street, is the roof and the ventilation system in this building. We are talking about safety issues. I mean, there was a leak in the gym.
And it's the most expensive.
You're cute. But, you know, I mean, we had a little leak in the gym a couple of weeks ago, so, you know, the issues with the roof are still continuing and Roy Brown's report, you know, is in there in terms of taking a look at the roof. And if you look at, you know, that last section where the projects are actually kind of listed out and we're looking at that full business, you know, you'll look at, you can see Roy's pictures of, you know, places where there's ponding in the current roof. You know, where you can see that things have been patched and patched and patched and patches on top of patches, you know. And Roy did, you know, some of the business with the ventilation is some of the curbs around the roof vents are not decoded, they need to be eight inches up. And some of them are only like four or five or six inches. So in my mind, you know, this is supposed to be, you know, that rusting thing, those are the hoods over the chem lab, which they shouldn't be over the individual tables. You should have a hood for your most volatile chemicals and that's where you work out of is out of the hood, not some thing that kind of could suck. Small children, whatever those look like. I'm sorry, I will not let my husband in the chem lab because I'm afraid of what he threw, it was in there. And then you can see, you know, after the cost estimate, you can see where it delaminated last March and, and stuff, you know, dropped through. and, and stuff, uh, you know, dropped through. You can see some of the damage to, you know, the classrooms and so on and so forth. So, um, you know, Roy did put together a phased-in plan to do things, if push came to shove. But I would say, if you're gonna do it, do it once and do it.
Yes, of course.
And do the ventilation system. There are twenty-two vents on the roof, and when, um, John Sullivan, within his first two days on the job, went up with our consultant, two of them worked and not well.
So would that give us any cost savings long-term?
No, but it's a health and safety issue. When you, you know, when we were looking at the bathrooms last year, um, around the time of the vote, uh, and the consultant was coming through, we went upstairs in the middle of the school bathrooms, which were pungent. How's that for a word? Um, and he took a piece of paper towel and went up against the vent, and the paper towel went, ah, 'cause it wasn't sucking in the air. I mean, you've, you've got a, a health and safety issue in terms of the roof and the ventilation system. You don't have ventilation. Technically, you're supposed to have a hundred cubic feet per minute per kid in a classroom of air exchange. Not that.
So I'm, I'm assuming we're in some kind of violation?
Yeah, pretty much. Ooh gee.
Violation of fresh air.
Huh?
Violation of fresh air.
Yes, but I mean, yeah, you get, you know, but you wind up with kids who have asthma or whatever, and you're not having a healthy air exchange. That's not good.
No, it's not good.
It's not good. So to me, that is the number one issue, is the roof and the ventilation system on this building.
So that's, that's basically independent of the school building project anyway?
Yep, that would be my number one thing. Um, you know, the replacement of the exterior doors, um, both here and at East Meadow. There's a sufficient enough, um, issues around the door jams and whatnot, so that water gets in. It freezes in the winter time, and the doors don't secure properly. There's a security issue.
Sounds wonderful.
Yep, they don't secure properly. Particularly in East Meadow, there's some rusting around the doors around, um, the front entrance. And water gets in, although I think John was gonna get some caulking done, and I haven't looked at it. I think he was gonna do that a couple of weeks ago, you know, to try and mitigate against that. But again, that's a band-aid on an open wound, when you really should replace the doors and have proper doors that work. As I understand, the door issue goes back to when you were principal, Jim. Over at East Meadow, is that in the wintertime, they'd freeze up, doors would expand, they wouldn't melt.
So based on that freeze, does it mean that until March, none of this-
They're not gonna look at this.
Okay.
Right, that's, that's the deal. It's not that it's frozen, it's just they've decided not to consider the school department's plan.
Okay.
But they're not considering anybody's plan?
They're not considering any, I understand. Or is it just the school?
Oh, really?
I, I, after the fact, I just assumed, I'm assuming now that everything was put on hold. But then-
Who knows?
If it, if everything isn't on hold, I think that's really not the right thing.
Well, that's something we need to look into.
So this should be still talked about, because, um, our main, especially since our main item does not have anything to do with East Meadow or West Street.
Well, again, that's what I was told by the town administrator, that he had met with the Capital Planning Committee, and that, uh, that was the decision was to hold off until the vote.
Well, I'm curious, though, I, is it, is it the whole capital plan is on hold, or is it only the school? Because if it's the school, I, I, that doesn't make any sense to me.
All I know is what I was told.
No, I'm sorry, I, I didn't get the exact clarification. Again, I'm assuming, and I may be assuming wrong, that, um, I would hope it'd be everything. It would not be fair to just hold one group off, you know, largest budget in the town pulled off from this until, because things still need to be done, we need to be in that pipeline, so there's no surprises, uh, and they factor into thinking.
And our children need to stay-
And not that if, not that if, because there's nothing to do with it. If the school vote passes-
Right.
That doesn't mean, okay, school, you're not getting anything else. That's not right either. That's not the right way of thinking. So we have to, I'll follow up again.
I was gonna say, is that something maybe our, our chair-
Whoever.
Would like to follow up on it?
Yes, I will. Or if you want to, you can come down.
Well, you and I'll talk, we'll just make sure we find out.
Like I say, meetings happen, and then I find out later, so.
Yeah, I, I, I am hard time with that. I really, I really do.
Not for the lack of trying to reach out, trust me, friends.
Well, I, you know-
You should've been part of that discussion.
That seems to be a larger discussion than-
Yeah, if I don't know about a meeting, I can't get to it. I would certainly go.
We had this conversation about communication, um, at last school meeting, at the last school committee meeting. I don't see any improvement, and I think it needs to be addressed in a formalized way. And I don't know what that looks like, but-
Right.
Clearly, it needs to be addressed.
Yeah.
Yep. 'Cause I don't, you know, I don't think it's fair to kind of lay it all on Dr. Cool to, um, you know, I don't know, maybe a letter coming with everybody from the school committee's signature on it, or I don't really know, but-
Stating your desire that we're trying to reach out, that we would like to reach out and collaborate more with the town, but it is difficult at best, meetings happen without our knowledge.
Yeah, and we, you know, we're really trying hard to play nice, and I think we gotta step up a notch.
Right, you know, we, you know, we came to the table over the shared Department of Public Facilities. Um, we'll brag and say I did ninety-nine percent of the work. I wrote the MO, I, off of, off of a template, I used a template, but I wrote the MOA. The group got together and, you know, wordsmithed it and whatever else, um, you know. We had participation on the town side in part for some of the interviews, but not completely. Um, you know, I posted and advertised the position, you know. I don't mind doing my part, but if the town's not gonna step to the plate-
Right.
Then I think the school committee needs to think carefully about how much of this shared services you're gonna engage in if, um, if the onus is gonna fall on, on the school district to share, to do the grunt work for that, when, quite frankly, there's a lot more on the plate to running the school district than to just stop everything else and do most of the work. I'm gonna be honest.
So understandably, it's not working right now, but instead of perpetuating this divide, which obviously exists, let's find out how we can, we can reach out. I don't mind going once a quarter to their meetings and get on their agendas and whatever we need, hoping that eventually it's gonna become a mutual connection.
Exactly.
I, I, I also think it, it requires some direct conversation.
Yeah, and I mean, that's, that's what we need to do, but-
Because, you know, she's not getting invited to meetings that she needs to be invited to.
Yeah, I'll find out after the fact.
You know, so, I mean, that's unacceptable, and yes, again-
I heard after July, I think you're gonna be-
And if we keep doing things the same way, we're gonna continue getting the same results. And I, you know, again, I'm not, I'm not, I, I agree that we need to be cooperative, and we need to be respectful, and, but at the same time, we need to feel as though that's being reciprocated, and I'm not feeling that.
Well, let's do our part, and then we'll have the conversation with everyone.
Well, if we get off kilter, if we get off kilter, 'cause our meetings are the same, usually the same time as their meetings. But if we get off kilter later when we arrange our meeting for January, maybe we can, you know, have a joint meeting, get on their agenda, you know, we post it, and just, you know, just have some of the discussions now, even before we get into the, before the school vote, before the whole budgeting process, you know, related to this. It might relate to this soft right thing. There's a whole number of things that could be part of the discussion for half an hour, and not feel that we got rushed, you know, we got ten minutes to do business, which isn't gonna work, so.
And to the extent that we can do it, if we can have everybody for one of the workshops.
Yep, I'd be more than happy to do that.
Yeah, let's, let's do that. And honestly, at this point, we, there's nothing that we don't discuss in public, or we don't try to share. Every conversation related to budget, if it's a deficit, probably we are going after it as strongly as anybody else. So, and we're, we're trying to keep connection with the finance committee, and we'd like to do the same thing with Select Board, town administrator. Let's just do that, but let's just try it on our side first. Let's make sure that everything that we do is working, and then we'll expect, uh, things from everybody else once we know that we tried, uh, different ways of reaching out to them. But let's just, uh, let's, let's try it again. Okay.
And then, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna ask that we table the English Language learners' discussion. Um, I'm still, I understand I got some data that's sitting in my mailbox late this afternoon that I have not had a chance to look at, so.
Okay. Thank you. So, January meeting dates, did you have anything else?
No.
Okay. January meeting dates, I think we already said that the 4th, we're not gonna meet because it doesn't leave us enough time to have any substantial topic to discuss.
Right.
So is, is everybody good with the 11th for our probably one and only meeting in January at this rate?
Yeah, because, um, the 18th is Martin Luther King Day, and I didn't catch that when I did the initial schedule, so.
It probably doesn't give us enough time to have enough, uh, so let me just, let me challenge ourselves on that one. I would think that probably we have enough things to talk about at any time. I mean, there are a lot of things going on. If that's the case, if there are different things that we need to catch up on, and I'm, I'm primarily emphasizing this because budget time is coming up. Is there anything that we can use that time to educate ourselves and get ready for some things? Talk about things that will pave the way for budget discussions? And if it's not really necessarily fruitful conversation, because we don't have enough information for stuff, let's not waste our own time either, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, the administration, we really need to sit down and honest in January. Haven't done much because, again, we haven't heard anything from the State House, and really, that's one of the key variables, is what does the governor's budget look like? What are we potentially anticipating for Chapter Seventy? I mean, those kinds of things. So to engage in this whole process before you have a chance to at least get a feel for what the numbers are gonna be coming out of, or at least have the governor's numbers in hand, and know that with someone in that ballpark, plus or minus, um, really doesn't make much sense to do much else, other than I've just had people, you know, start thinking about, start thinking about your staffing, start thinking about, you know, um, things that, uh, you know, you haven't budgeted for. I think, you know, for example, I'll use, uh, you know, contracted services in the area of technology, you know, things like our teach point evaluation software, our, you know, firewall, these kinds of things, you know, are all those embedded in David's thinking around the tech budget, you know? Taking a look with Kyle and sitting down and really kind of, uh, RJ and I going through with him and say, let's come up with a budget plan that has certain classifications of expenses coming from athletic revolving and certain other things coming from the local, and what does that look like? Can we sustain out of athletic revolving if we're putting in transportation? Or should transportation be budgeted out of the local budget? You know, some of those kinds of things. And just really have some, some good, in-depth conversations. In the meantime, looking, you know, by mid-January, we should begin to see some numbers flow out of the State House, and then we'd have a better handle on what's happening with state funding as well, and that will help drive some of the thinking.
So, even if we don't get that, maybe we have an opportunity to get into some budget conversation. Because two things may happen. One, one is whether or not we're gonna have enough money to maintain a line item, a service, class, whatever it might be. What I'm hoping is that most of our conversation will not be around that, but around, let's assume everything's gonna remain the same, but is there a way to provide those services more efficiently, so that, you know, especially based on your zero-based budget approach? Maybe we can find some efficiencies that may allow us to still, uh, reduce the budget to an extent, but be able to provide most of the services, if not all. And if we still need to go back to the town with our requests, we'll do that. But, you know, we, we should, we should educate ourselves as to what our, what our basic needs are.
Yeah, and that will flow from the work that they do to create these zero-based budgets.
Right, 'cause I think, 'cause I think the staffing would be one of the key things first. That's the, that's the meat and bones of our district. And if there's questions on, you know, yes, we're having the same amount of teachers at this grade level or by school.
Right, right.
Before contract negotiation, still might help to say, that's the essence, 'cause it has other effects on specials and everything else, and what else can be offered, so, at least on staffing.
Yep, and I'm looking-
Which is the biggest part of our budget, will be a part most important.
I know that Kathy had to send some more numbers off to Nezdech the other day, um, or they were checking some numbers with her. So I'm assuming that the ten-year enrollment projection that's part of your Nezdech membership should be coming up fairly shortly. So again, that will give us-
Right.
Some, some forecasting to take a look at in terms of staffing needs and where we think we're headed, so.
Okay. That sounds good, so going back to the, um, calendar.
January 11th is the first, right?
January 11th is our first one.
I thought we said that was it in January, because then-
Yeah, the 18th is a holiday, the 25th, you got, that would be two meetings right in a row.
We'll move it later in February, right?
Yeah, but then we're off, then we're off like, you know.
Right, wow.
What time is the January 11th meeting?
Six thirty? Policy Subcommittee at five thirty, she asked.
Yeah.
Six thirty?
So there's nothing we can talk about on the 4th that-
Aren't we meeting with the Finance Committee on 4th?
Oh, yeah, we are, yeah, 4th, we're now committed to that one. Okay.
And that's at seven, you think?
We think, yeah.
Yeah.
And so Judy, you're going to that, too?
Yes.
I'm gonna tag along with the butcher's son, that's all there.
So how about, um, the week of the 18th? We don't have to meet on Mondays all the time, so if there is any to meet, should we meet on Tuesday or any other day?
But that's only a week is going by, and between meetings, it's the same as if we had one on 25th and 26th.
Oh, yeah, which way out there, okay. All right, so I guess January is, uh, only something else.
I mean, if something pressing were to come up that, you know, we needed to meet, you know, we could totally do that, but-
So let it put this way.
'Cause it really, once the kids are gone on Wednesday, I mean, there's not gonna be much business to conduct anyway.
Let, let, let's just think of it this way. If the 4th is still good, we can switch our meeting with the Finance Committee. They offered the 11th, too, so we can switch to the 11th with the Finance Committee.
I don't think you're gonna have enough business to conduct on the 4th.
'Cause they're closing school Wednesday, and they're on vacation, and, you know.
I don't think there's gonna be much of anything.
Which I think you need to title some time. You need some time away from here.
And that's the same thing, otherwise, yeah.
One time. Oh, yeah, you can take a, a day or two, whatever, but-
'Cause I'm thinking that our, our conversations are not always dependent on what happens during the previous two weeks. We just, you know, we don't, it's, we don't talk about operational stuff most of the time anyways, policy-related, or it's gonna be budget-related going forward, but I, I agree, maybe you-
I think we just keep the 11th, and if something, something, hey, we do need to get another one in before February, then we can decide.
Yeah, we can do something, yeah.
All right, so we'll do that. February, the 1st, and then the, because the third week is, again, a holiday, it's President's Day.
We did make that fix in the calendar. Um, let me just get there from here.
So the 1st is six thirty?
Yep.
Yep, uh, da, 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 da. That one I happened to grab, I was pretty sure. So I have us down for a meeting on the 22nd, 'cause it's actually five Mondays that month.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And that one's gonna be at six?
I have it at six thirty.
No, we can't, we can't be in a time.
That can be at six thirty.
Okay?
Yeah.
Oh, and playing at six thirty makes my life a lot easier.
Six thirty's good.
'Cause I'm assuming that means a five thirty policy.
Oh, yeah, every time School Board needs, I'm gonna put you first, you know what? We have a long way to go. So every time.
Those are so much fun to read.
Especially some of the ones that I have been reading, you won't, and I'm like, where did this come from?
The ones, the ones from nineteen eighties, you know, just, uh, childhood memories and stuff, yeah.
Everybody just, everybody just copied those, all supposed to just copy and copy and copy, you can tell that. You know, people's words, that's all it is, it's just trying to stick a letter log. People's words, that's all it is, is just trying to stick with letter of law and just keep producing them.
The best part is when there's like other school names in them.
Well, I'm saying they never got changed when they were copied and pasted and sent over.
22nd. Then we meet on the first? No, on the seventh.
22nd, is that school vacation?
No, this is the week after.
So can we assume they're all going to be 6:30 now?
Yeah, no.
You said anytime.
For that week, because my conflict is the Tuesday before that.
Yeah, the third. So, yeah, the 7th and the 21st are the meetings on March.
So then the 21st, is that going to be at 6 o'clock?
21st, it will be at 6, yes. Okay, what else?
Far enough.
Far enough?
Yep.
Okay.
Upcoming business, we've already talked about that in terms of FY '17 budget. We'll start getting off in earnest on January, so we'll give you some updates as to where we are in the process on January 11th. And the other thing, as I mentioned early, was these folks from Kirsar Energy wanted to be able to come on January 11th as well, and I'll present you with a proposal. My understanding is that they have leased the land from Westover, and that they're going to build two solar farms, both at about 650,000 kilowatts, so all total will be about 3.1 megawatts of power coming out of that, so, again, that could provide some real energy savings as well in terms of using them and coming off the grid. And then they would open up some other things and then net meter back, so.
So the next two could practically be free? All solar.
Yep, almost. So.
Cool.
They asked when they could come and meet with you, and I said, I was pretty sure we would settle on the 11th as a date, so.
Anything else? So we have an executive session. We will vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Part A2, to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, the superintendent, and three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with Unit A teachers, as an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the school committee. The committee will return to open session. We'll have a roll call, please.
Jan K. Murkowski, aye.
Marie McCord, aye.
Jen Petras, aye.
Henry Evan, aye. So we're back in regular session. We have one vote before we adjourn for the evening. We will, we have a vote on the memorandum of agreement on the school nurse leader to approve the MOA pending feedback and approval by the association. Okay, so for that, I will ask for a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion, questions, comments? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Any opposed? Okay, good, thank you.
Good work.
And now you need a motion to adjourn.
Please.
Motion.
Second.
Great. All in favor, please say aye.